Welcome to the Board of Education's October 3, 2024 Regular Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Templeton.
(inaudible)
We do have an elected official here this evening. Ben Connor from the Hamilton County School Board has joined us tonight. Welcome, Ben. We're glad you're here. Just a reminder that our policy review meeting was rescheduled due to last week's inclement weather, so that will take place tomorrow, October 4th at 10:00 a.m. in this boardroom. A couple other announcements. The Strategic Plan Committee will meet on Wednesday, October 16th at 10:00 a.m. in this boardroom. And our Board Annual Workshop will be held at Bridgewater Place on October 24th and 25th. The meeting time will be announced and published on the meeting agendas as soon as possible, but we will plan to start around 8:30 and wrap up around 4:00 each day. And welcome back, Ms. Elkins. We missed you Monday. Ms. Elkins had a choral concert to attend, so I hope that went well. Horia? Awesome. Awesome. On behalf of the Board, I want to wish all of our students, families, staff, and community a happy fall break as our schools are closed, October 7th through 11th next week. I know my own kids are excited about that. And thank you else, or thank you to everybody else who's in attendance this evening. Are there requested changes to the agenda?
Salute.
Motion by Mr. Triplett, second by Ms. Christie. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Ms. Cote.
Item 5, Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6A, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy B-230 Civility Code as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6B, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-170 Student Transportation Management as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6B, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy E-170 Student Transportation Management as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6C, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G-120 Professional Growth Opportunities as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6D, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G-470 Substitute Teachers as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6E, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-130 Work-Based Learning as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6F, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-190 Organization for Instruction as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6G, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-210 Textbook and Instructional Materials Selection, Distribution, and Care as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6H, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-222 Internet Safety as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6I, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-340 Promotion, Retention, Acceleration as amended.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6J, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I-370 Graduation Requirements as amended.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6K, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-150 School Admissions as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6L, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-191 Misbehaviors and Disciplinary Options as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6M, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-197 Student Interference with Classroom as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Excuse me. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6N, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-211 Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying or Cyberbullying as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
6O, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J-280 Alternative School Programs as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7A, approved Tennessee Department of Education State Special Education Preschool Grant in the amount of $2,022,158.80.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7B, approved memorandum of understanding with Knox Education Foundation for priority-based grant funding up to $100,000.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7C, approved memorandum of understanding with Knox Education Foundation for 865 Academy Partner Engagement and Integrated Community and Family Engagement Grant Funding up to $50,000.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7D, approved Dollar General Literacy Foundation Grants in the total amount of $12,500 for Knox County Schools Library and Media Services, CDF Elementary School, East Knox County Elementary School, Northwest Middle School, and South Knoxville Elementary School.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8A, approved contract with Delta Dental of Tennessee for provision of employee dental benefit services for the term of January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027, which may be extended for two additional years.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion on this item? No. Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8B, approved contract with Gallagher &amp; Associates Incorporated for provision of fire, alarm, inspection, and repair services up to $180,000 annually for the term of October 1 through 2024 through September 30, 2027, which may be extended for seven additional years.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8C, approved contract with Carey Environmental Services Incorporated for provision of hazardous waste connection services up to $50,000 annually for the term of November 1 through 2025 through October 31, 2025, which may be extended for four additional years.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8D, approved amendments to contracts with Bowtel ETN Company LLC and Digital Group LLC for installation services for federally funded cable networking.
Second.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8E, approved design contract with Sherman Carter Barnhart Architects, P LLC for addition to Halls Middle School up to $675,000.
Salute.
A motion by Mr. Triplett, a second by Ms. Christie. Y'all flip-flopped those. Any discussion? Seeing there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8F, approved design contract with Thomas Caldwell Architect for partial roof replacement at Gibbs High School to include the Career and Technical Education Building up to $188,760.
Salute.
Motion by Mr. Wright, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A, approved schematic designs for Innovative School Models Grant Project at Bearden High School.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Triplett. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9B, approved deferment of October 15, 2024 adoption deadline for the 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan to November 30, 2024.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion on this item? No. Seeing there is none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Triplett, do we have some public, public forum speakers?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We do.
Thank you.
Candace Banister. Candace, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Candace Banister, Knox County, Redditch. I'm a fellow patient of the patient. Mark and I sat down with the Superintendent of Knox County Schools Director, Student Services Deputy Law Director, along with Will's attorney, to share our concerns surrounding the suicide loss of our son Will. We shared the whole tragic tale. When we told the part about Will's administrator going into all four of his classes his first week back at school, as well as the accounting from Will's friend regarding the admin's behavior toward Will, the deputy law director said that the allegation of bullying, though we had not used that word, meant that there would have to be a state-mandated 21-day investigation. I was grateful to hear this. As a Knox County Schools teacher, I knew the way Will had been treated was inappropriate. The deputy law director said they would pull the video from the school. Unfortunately, we were later told that it was not available. That evening, my brother called to check on us. He worked for a very large corporation, and I told him that there would be an investigation due to our allegation of bullying. He told me not to hold my breath, that the system would circle the wagons to protect their own interests, and that they would investigate Will and me far more than the administrator who had treated Will so poorly, and that they would come back and say some pretty terrible things about both of us to keep me from asking any more questions. I disagreed. I told him it's different in a school setting, that you wanted to know this information. He said just be forewarned. I still maintain that Knox County Schools would do the right thing. The irony is that to investigate the allegation of bullying of our 16-year-old son, you then intimidated Will's friends, who were all minors, just 16 years old themselves. You called them in one by one into an office they had never seen with an investigator they had never met, an armed officer, a tape recorder sitting on the table, and interrogated them without ever asking their parents for permission. One of Will's friends said it was intense, like something you'd see out of an old movie. The boy's parents were understandably upset, and some called, some even went to the school to complain. One father reached out to us and told us what had been done, and that he was not happy about it, that I should be certain to request a transcript because his son had told the truth. I felt terrible that Will's friends had been treated in such a way. I'm not saying that the system didn't act within the law, but when you're dealing with minors, especially other people's children, just because you can doesn't mean you should. KCS claims to utilize trauma-informed practices, but what you did to those students was far from trauma-informed. It was the exact opposite. Why didn't you take the step of contacting those parents and asking for permission? Is it because you wanted the element of surprise you wanted the boys to feel they had no choice but to speak with you? You knew if they asked the parents, they might say no? I don't believe this is what the deputy law director envisioned when he called for this investigation, as you never really investigated the actions of the admin. It was a It was exactly as my brother said. It was about circling the wagons and protecting your own. Never mind that I was one of your employees. Never mind that I was not the one who bullied other students. Never mind that I was the one who had just lost my sixteen-year-old son to suicide. Thank you.
Megan Welch. Megan, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Megan Welch. I'm a lifelong resident of Knox County. My son is a sophomore at West High School and my daughter is a seventh grader at West Valley Middle School. The safety incidences that erupted in our county the week of September ninth have prompted me to be here tonight. My husband and I, like many other parents across our county, were forced to choose between sending our kids to school when safety could not be guaranteed or keeping them home where they would lose valuable instruction time. No parent should be put in this position. No parent should wonder if their child will come home safely from school. My question for the board is what will you do to guarantee the safety of our children at school? I wrote to various levels of elected officials, including members of this board, expressing my concerns. I understand the steps that the state has taken to increase security at school, from funding an SRO at every school to funding bulletproof glass to putting up fences around the school perimeter. But the reality is that none of these measures prevents a weapon from entering our school. My daughter's classmate was arrested a few weeks ago. My son attends a school that had multiple gun threats last year and an actual gun incident. The threat to the kids inside our schools is real. While I appreciate the efforts that our legislature has made so far, the response and the response across our county a few weeks ago to mitigate the threats, what has been done so far is not enough. I understand there are mixed feelings regarding metal detectors at schools and many arguments about why they will not work. How are they going to be funded? How are we going to staff them? Is hardening the schools really the right move? But I would argue that this is one of a few solutions that will actually catch a weapon before it enters the building. And metal detectors are a normal part of our everyday life. I had to go through one to get in here tonight. You all did too. I don't think that you all feel that your safety during this meeting is more important than the safety of our kids at school. They have to go through metal detectors to attend to any major event in Knox County government, Knox County. Football games, concerts, all of these things are normal to our children. There are other options to consider. Educating parents about safe gun storage is really important. Nationally, seventy-five percent of children under the age of eighteen got their gun from their home, from their parent, or from a close relative. Additional options would include conducting random searches and using police dogs to detect weapons. I'm asking this board to seriously consider how we can implement these measures across our county, including metal detectors. I've done my own research on cost. I really do believe that parents will help fundraise for this if this board cannot or will not set aside funds to provide metal detectors at our schools. If, God forbid, there is an incident and a Knox County parent loses a child, will this board be able to say that you did everything that you could do to prevent that from happening? I am tired of worrying every time the school phone number pops up on my cellphone during the day. Excuse me. I am tired of my daughter's constant fear that something is going to happen to her at school. And I'm really tired of accepting my son's stance that while he hopes nothing happens, he has a plan to escape every one of his classrooms at West High School and he has a plan to meet up with his friends if they have to flee for their lives. This environment is not conducive to learning and our kids and our teachers deserve so much better. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Megan. Sylvia Woods. Sylvia, if you'll state your name and county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Sylvia Woods. I live in South Knoxville. I'm alive. I was with you all last Monday. I've come back to give you some updates. It was so much fun. I thought I'd come back again. I told you that about our issues and our getting the clothing center open. We have sent you information to answer your questions about our legitimacy and our forms and as noted, we are a registered branch of the Tennessee PTA. Since Monday, we have revised our order request form along with instructions and we sent it to Cory for distribution. We've had fifteen to twenty volunteers off and on two to three days per week since June. Some of these volunteers are used to working one day a week folding T-shirts. They've been doing all kinds of other works because the work had to be done. And they're ready to go back to one day a week instead of two or three days. They told me that today we had a meeting. We have a committee of volunteers to, that will be specific to fill orders and to train staff members when we get them. And we are willing to work next week. I think Cory told me they might be available to us to open on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. We can't get in the building without somebody else being there. We understand there are a group of applicants, so we're looking forward to being able to get some employees. We have figured out with Cory's help access to a secure guest link to the internet. That will hook us up to where we can start getting orders. This is something we've been looking for and asking about and asking about and asking about and until I guess the right question was asked, we didn't think about a guest internet. We just kept thinking, can we get in with it? We can't get into the computer. Can we use the teacher's supply depot to print out orders, whatever it was? And then we happened up on this guest internet. And so I think that's ready to go. We also got our packing station, I think, yesterday. We're ready to go. Cory will provide the schools with the information and the application. And I have brought all of you all a copy of the instructions and the application, so you'll see what we're talking about. Oh, gosh, that runs down fast, don't it? We'll be working on the MOU, but we need to get some experience behind us before we can tell you exactly what we're willing to do and how we're going to be able to do it. So I think that's it. I hate it. So can I give these to the, to the secretary or somebody distribute it to the school board members? Yeah.
We can do that.
This is instructions and this is the form and the guidance counselors are waiting to get these. And we're waiting to fill that first order.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes the public forum.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. Well, with that, I have, oh, yes, Reverend Butler.
I'm not prepared to respond, but I think we, I would like to have a response concerning the school safety issue. And if our superintendent can at least speak to that, we don't want to leave here. I don't want to leave here with the taste in my mouth of that we have a concern for our children. I know the concern, I'm just going to be honest and say, I don't think the concern is going to go away. My, my son graduated from Austin East and, and I have a grandson at Austin East now. And I want them, I want to feel safe.
Thank you.
But when you look across the country and all the communities, safety is something we'd love to be assured of, but we just, we can't control everything. But I'd like to know from the superintendent what things we are doing and we are trying to assure that we can be as safe as possible.
I think Ms. Christie did.
Can I piggyback off that before you, so you can do it all at one time? I just, just to clarify a couple of things because I, I don't want people to leave here with a misconception. The public, Dr. Adams, correct me if I'm wrong. The Public Building Authority does manage this building, correct? So the, that, that is their security team and system in place out there. That, that is not, I, I do think that is important, that just for people to know that we don't have a standard for ourselves, that we don't have at the schools. And, and I do recognize the challenges because there's so much about security that you can't talk about publicly without compromising security itself. So I do know that there's challenges. Like Reverend Butler said, we all want everybody to feel really safe and, and it's a really delicate balance in giving the amount of information that makes you feel secure without compromising that security.
Yep, go ahead, Dr. Isaac. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Butler and Ms. Christie, Madam Chair. I think you said, you said it well, Reverend Butler. You know, it's, 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 it's something we do think about all the time, you know. I, I would say, even as a parent, my youngest graduated last year. My oldest is actually student teaching for us right now in Knox County Schools. So, yeah, I mean, I have the parent side too that, that understands what that looks like and what that feels like. You know, we, we take that very seriously and I don't think there are words that make everyone feel safe, you know. And I wish there were. You know, we've tried to communicate. Our principals have done a really good job, I think, as well, communicating, kind of play-by-play as things take place. You know, I can't say enough about our partners that we have with the Sheriff's Department, Chief Noel, Sheriff Spangler, all the way down to Judge Irwin, Homeland Security, Secret Service, all of these, Tennessee Highway Patrol have all been involved in everything that we've done over the last couple of weeks. You know, it is, it isn't, it isn't a good feeling to have. But I will say that we do everything that, that we feel comfortable that, that can happen, you know, to the fullest extent. We always start with, and you see some of our finest in the back of the room right now. We have a highly-trained armed officer in, in every one of our schools and that's a minimum of one. When you add the, the security from the Sheriff's Department and also from KPD, we have additional on top of that. You know, these, these folks, what's so great about that is they're highly-trained in lots of things. They're not highly-trained for one thing. And so many of these mitigation types of things happen, you know, for one situation. You know, what we bank on is the fact that we have highly-trained officers working closely with our administrators to, to be ready for whatever takes place. You know, if, if you're in our schools and some of you I know volunteer and do that, it's not unusual to watch officers walking the perimeter. I was in one of our schools today. He walked me out and opened the gate to, to like pull my truck out. I mean, so they're doing this level of diligence in everything that they do. Folks are reporting more things, kids are reporting more things, and that's, that's great. I think some of what we're seeing too is the fact that we've built structures. I mean, Dr. Brown and his team, through our school culture team, we have whole child support teams in every building now. We're identifying things, talking about kids not after things happen, but before they do. Recognizing early signs of kids, maybe even they're showing depression, if they're showing anxiety, if their attendance drops, if they're having family problems, if, if there are hints of bullying or comments that may. People are reporting that we're intervening with our social workers, with our counselors, sometimes with outside-helping counselors. You know, twenty-four-seven, our law enforcement partners are doing home visits for us. When we take every threat as serious, there's not one we go, I'll just get to that tomorrow. You know, and I talked to different folks, had, had dinner with the superintendent in Chattanooga a couple of weeks ago and we were sharing the same stories about the same volume. I was in Florida a couple of weeks ago. A fifth-grade teacher came up and said, I had three threats in my classroom. And I'm going, yeah, we're, we're getting that in Tennessee too, you know. So there is a little bit of this national piece that's happened recently. And I think, you know, sometimes people copycat and some of it's been internet things, you know, that, that happened. And again, we take every one of those serious, no matter what, what's printed on there, what's, what's said in there. And they're getting to other surrounding counties as well. And, and, you know, we all talk about those things. So we take them all serious and, and that's why the reaction of evacuation, the reaction of lockdowns, things like that that we report out and see, those are our safety protocols. And obviously, we're not going to disclose all of those right now. But we, we go into full effect. That does sometimes heighten people's awareness, but we, we err on the side of protection and safety for all of our students when that happens. And we've been fortunate to quickly get to the bottom of these things. Threats have become more sophisticated. I've said this before when we did a press conference. It's not, you know, maybe when we were in school, a student pulling the fire alarm to get out of a test on a Friday afternoon. You know, it's now a lot of internet. A lot of things aren't, you know, we, we do, I heard mentioning of different kinds of things, random weapon searches. We do that. We have schools, obviously, we don't announce who they are. We have those when those times come and we do that, looking for those. When we're aware of other things from law enforcement or anything else, we check those out. We increase security at times for different kinds of things. So all of those are in response to that. And I think, again, at the core, we all as parents and we all as individuals want that hundred percent guarantee. And we're doing everything we can, researching every new idea, what makes sense for us to have in place to do, we do. You know, the cost is not really what limits us when it comes to that. We want to make sure we're doing those things. There is a balance too. A school should be a welcoming place. It should be a place where kids want to come to, should be a place where families are welcome in. And, and that's always kind of the tension that you're dealing with. How open can you be? And also, you know, not wanting to, to make it too institutionalized. We want it to be a good place for that to happen. And so it's not a trade-off for us that, you know, we would do that for any reason. We continuously monitor and try to get better at those things. So, so we understand, we feel that. We continue to try to communicate when we have that done. But I feel really confident just in, in our security team and our partners that we're doing everything that we need to do right now. And when there are new things or better technologies that come out, we research those. We look at those. And I think, you know, sometimes like the talk of metal detectors, that one comes up a lot in these times. Well, you know, we know a lot of the things we've seen over the last couple of weeks, a metal detector wouldn't have done anything for it. You know, there, there are internet threats, there, you know, even like a bomb threat, right? Those kinds of things aren't the kinds of things that a metal detector is going to help us at. So you know, we try to balance that out, what we think is best and, and what our partners are telling us are best for that too. And feel really strongly that we are doing that now. But again, we always deserve the right to get smarter as new technologies come out.
I appreciate that. And I think it's just the constant communication between parents. I'm a parent myself, Ms. Welch. I have a middle schooler and a high schooler too at Harden Valley. So I know Harden Valley Middle School is one of the schools I got hit hard with a lot of these threats. And I think too, and I want to stress, I've been talking to my own community. You know, parents, talk to your kids. Because we are seeing a high number of middle schoolers making these threats. And I don't think that middle schoolers understand the severity of what they're doing, that it's going to affect their, the rest of their lives and just have those conversations at home as well. Ms. Morgan?
Kind of following what you said, Madam Chair. Ms. Welch, thank you for speaking to us today. I'm glad that you brought this up so that we could speak about it in this manner. And I do just want to share with you and all the other parents, like Ms. Henderson said, I, I have children in our schools too. I have three kids that I drop off every single morning. And I have maybe even said it in this, this arena before. It's like dropping my heart off to walk outside every day. And it is what all of us worry about as parents and fear. And while I, none of us know what's going to happen in life or can make guarantees, I am truly so happy that I can tell other parents that I feel good about sending my kids to school every day. And knowing things on this side of it that obviously, like Dr. Isaac said, we can't share. And I wish everyone could know that, but that's part of the safety plan. I feel even better about it now that I'm on the school board than I did before. And we are, I wish we could do something really quick and easy, like order those badges that everybody's talking about or whatever, because that's something that spreads really well in a picture and in messages and says, hey, we really do care because look what we did. But actually, everybody has, that's not a surprise. That's not news to anybody here. And everybody has looked into what's best for our specific system. And I feel so good about that. And I just want to reassure people that we have amazing people from the top down who are working on our security teams. And that is the best thing we can do for our kids. So I really am so thankful for that and thankful for our leaders, our law enforcement officers and our school leaders for letting it be known that threats are not okay and won't be tolerated. And I think that message is getting across lately and that's really important that we communicate that as well, that it is not acceptable to make threats. And we want our kids to be safe and feel safe at school because that is really important.
And Ms. Welch, I, I also, I feel comfortable sending my children to school. They went. And I would love to connect after the meeting, give you my cellphone, so then we can, you have that for me. Because listen, I always come from a parent perspective. And like Ms. Morgan said, every day I drop my kids off, I am dropping off a piece of myself. So let's connect after the meeting too and I'll give you my cellphone number as well. Ms. Fontana Ridley?
Thank you. Again, thank you, Ms. Welch. A lot of accolades for stepping up. It's hard to do that. I want to encourage everybody to visit your respective schools. Parents, teachers, go to other schools, board members, go to your schools. I could barely get into Cedar Bluff Elementary because I didn't have my badge the other day. So they are taking the security very seriously. So I just wanted to encourage people to, to go and talk to them. And if for nothing else, put your mind a little bit more at ease with the structure that they've got going on.
Ms. Olkins?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak from the student's perspective in our schools. I went to school on nine eleven and it was pretty empty. But I kind of think it depends a lot on the teachers. And I think at Halls, at least, we're really fortunate because I don't, I'm not in a classroom where I'm not fully confident in that teacher's ability to protect me. And I also am fully confident in our SROs because I even know a few from, I guess, wrestling. They're very confident in themselves and their relationship They're very confident in themselves, and their relationships to the students help reassure us that we're safe. Like, they will do everything in their power, and I think there's a lot of power in the adults in our schools to reassure the students. And like you all have said, I'm really glad people are reporting things, because, I mean, it's better to it be reported than not. And I understand where you're coming from, where it's a hard reality to accept that we have escape plans, and we're scared to go to school, but it's just something that we have to live with, because I know that growing up, most of you all didn't even think about it. Like, you all didn't think, I'm going to go to school, this is going to happen. But it's something that my generation has to live with, and we're just working through that ourselves. So, hopefully, you all can understand that and realize that, as unfortunate as it is, it is a reality for us. Thank you.
Thank you for that student perspective. Thank you. And thank you, board members, for this discussion, and Ms. Welch for bringing this to us and making it a priority. So, with that, I hope everybody has a wonderful fall break, and we are adjourned.